Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. And if you stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First on the agenda of this meeting, proclamation for Friends of Lacey Library.
Whereas Friends of the Lacey Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. Whereas the work of Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. Whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore I, Nicholas Juliana, Mayor of the Township of Lacey, excuse me, proclaim October twenty-first to the twenty-seventh as Friends of Lacey Libraries Week in Lacey Township and urges everyone to join the Friends of the library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. Rebecca's here.
Rebecca?
Rebecca?
Do you want to say a few words?
Uh, sure. Yeah. Sure. Absolutely. There. Unfortunately, our Friends couldn't be here this evening, but I just wanted to say that it is because of all the hard work we have to do in our fundraising that Lacey would buy so many of the wonderful programs and events that we have. And this Saturday, September nine to two, they are having the Mesa fundraiser. So if you're interested now, meet the Friends, get to know what they do. Thank you.
I would be remiss if I did not mention that my mother's been a friend of the Lacey Library forever. So I just want to thank all the Friends of the Library for all the work they do in the town.
Yes, thank you. Excellent presentation to various organizations.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for having us, and the committee. I just want to say that Voice Free has been an integral part of Lacey Township for over fifty years. And that fifty years, we've tried to be a good neighbor. Just because we shut down, reduced the number of staff, we still want to be a good neighbor. So the employees of Voice Free got together and basically put together a few donations for some of the local charities because we really appreciate the work that the local charities do for Lacey Township. So first is for Harold Peters and the Lacey Food Bank. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Picture moment, sir.
Mind if I address your own names, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for such a nice donation. We help one hundred and seventy-one families there, and it's growing. It's really hitting big. I'd like to address the folks here and some of the people in TV land, give them credit where some credit is due. I come up here two times a year and receive these checks, but sometimes we never, we forget to give the better actors our thank you. So, starting with some of the clubs, the Lacey Upps Club, the Lacey Moose Club, all I can go on, Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary, the ShopRite, Walmart, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. One of the Boy Scouts earned, two of the Boy Scouts earned their Eagle Badge by working on garden for our clients. This year, last year, one of the fellows earned his Eagle Badge, which is the highest you can go on scouting by putting a garden for our clients. There's just so many people. We have a hundred, a couple of hundred esteemed sponsors. They write a check for two hundred and forty dollars every year for us. So many people go unthanked, and I want to thank everybody for the support like this. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The next one is one for the Parkland Port Zoo, and the other is for veterans. All right? Nobody's here tonight to take them, but I just want to say thank you to them, also helping the community. We'll make sure they get these checks and continue their good work. Thank you. Thanks for being with the Parkland.
Thank you. Thank you. You know how I feel. I wish you were staying a lot longer. That's all right. What the?
He'll physically be there.
Recreation Department, upcoming programs, summer wrap-up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I asked to come here this evening because I wanted to kind of go through, we had a really interesting summer. I ended up being ill for a little bit, and my team stepped up and did an amazing job. But I want to talk a little bit about, you know, some of the numbers that we worked with this year. Very successful program, our summer camp program. We had another ten percent increase in enrollment. We were up to five hundred and ninety-nine students. I was a little disappointed we didn't hit six hundred, but it was, it's a great program and it grows every year. And what that means for, for Lacey Township is that we have, you know, close to six hundred kids in our summer camp program that have dedicated, you know, childcare from basically as early as seven forty-five in the morning and till three P.M. We were able to extend our days this year to include Friday trips. We had four Friday trips where we sent our campers who opted in to attend those trips to destinations as far as Branchburg to sports complexes, Liberty Science Center, Sahara Sams, you know, so they went to destinations that were fun, and it gave the parents an extra day of coverage because traditionally in the past we were on Monday through Thursday camp. So with some thinking outside the box, we were able to put some of our trips on Fridays and extend to a five-day coverage for the parents who needed that extra coverage. You know, and we also this year added lake days for our summer camp, which is the first time we've ventured into bringing our camp, our campers to the lakes, you know, which was very successful. So we were able to, you know, just think outside the box and able to utilize a lot of the services that we have, you know, within our community. So we're really proud of that. The program was fantastic and we're, you know, based on the success of those trips, we're really now looking at as much as we can to extend and provide as many services to our section of the community through our summer camp. Now, another nice thing that we did this year, I think the relationship should only build from here, is we have the expertise in-house of our head guard and our beach patrol supervisor being there for many years, as Mr. Mazzara has been with us since the beginning of the beach patrol. But we have his expertise and we have a structure in place that allowed us, we always train our guards, we have weekly drills and they participate in that, but we also extended that service to where town and Barnet get through, the relationship that we have with our recreation director there. And we were able to train their guards and their, you know, their beach patrol and had them drill with us so we can kind of make sure that we're extending that professionalism throughout not just our town, but the entire South Jersey area. So we were proud to be able to do that. Our badge sales did go up this year, which was fantastic. So we have seen an increase in our badge sales. So we're constantly always looking for new things to do there. We've purchased paddleboards last year and we're able to utilize them for a second year in a row now, and paddleboarding has become very popular. So different things throughout the year that we're proud of in the summertime have been our summer camp success and this year's success with our lake program. We've also, you know, we've increased a lot of our events and things like that, but, you know, the two things I really wanted to focus on with our summer was our lakes and our camp because those are the things that help bring revenue into the Recreation Department and, you know, help keep us, you know, moving in a positive direction. One of the other programs that really was, you know, stand out this year was our farmer's market. We, you know, we took over the farmer's market, I want to say, four or five years ago now, and every year we're looking to tweak something new, bring something else in. And our goal was to provide an opportunity for people to come, have farm-fresh produce.
Go to the camera.
And, you know, have the farm-fresh produce, but the specialty food items and even things that you wouldn't normally think of at a farmer's market, like homemade soaps and homemade coffee, you know, so we've got a lot of local vendors that want to come out and be a part of it, which is great. Our weather did not always cooperate, but even with our weather challenges, we had probably one of the most successful markets. We hear it on our Facebook page all the time that people would rather come to our market than any others.
I had some woman comment that we had the best market in Ocho County.
So, the couple of changes we did make this year to the market, though, we did start earlier and we went later. So we were able to bring our market into town as early as the beginning of June, and we ran right to the beginning of October. But something special that we have going on this year, and I want to make sure we highlight it because it's different, it's the first time we've ever done this, although there's other farmer's markets that do it, is we're bringing the market back for a special holiday Thanksgiving farmer's market. And I'm going to have Maggie talk a little bit about that. I'll hold the sign, I'll be your vanna.
I'm your vanna.
We'll have that here.
So, on Monday, November nineteenth, we're bringing back our farmer's market. It's going to be at the Lacey United Methodist Church still. We have about nine of our vendors coming back, and it's going to be a rain or shine day, and if the weather's too cold, or you never know how the weather's going to be, it might snow, who knows, we're going to hold the farmer's market in the basement of the Methodist church.
Oh, wow.
Just so no matter what happens, we are able to provide fresh fruits and vegetables for people on Thanksgiving.
That's great.
And we do have confirmations from some of our vendors. Would you like to go over who is going to be attending?
We have Kirky's Farm Market, High Mountain Foods, Cranberry Hall Farms, Gold Cove Soaps, A&amp;A Dips, Jersey Charm.
Coffee.
That's a coffee. I'm missing one and I can't think of it.
Well, essentially, we have our farm-fresh produce coming, we'll have a homemade soap vendor, we have a vendor who makes prepackaged seasonings for dips, jerkies, different beef jerkies.
Yeah, and we have people that make homemade sauce, like sweet potato sauce, barbecue sauce.
Yeah, all the sauces will be there. So there's a little bit of everything. If you're a foodie, you should stop down at the market. If you love farm-fresh produce, it's a great spot to be as well. So that's going to be Monday, November nineteenth, over at the Lacey United Methodist Church. And we're excited to see, we'll see you there. So if you have a look, you know, getting early to start us and gear shopping, sure your favorite culinary enthusiast, that's the place to be. So, a couple of things for this fall, in addition to our market that we're doing. We have lots of different programs going on, so I'm just going to give you a brief highlight of the different types of things you can do. Obviously, we've always had a strong yoga program, so anybody who's interested in yoga can always participate with us in recreation, as well as zumba. But we also have a sewing program and a knitting program for all ages. We start at youth and go all the way through adult. Actually, Thursday night is our knitting program. It's a completely free program. Our instructor donates her time, of course, all right?
Milk and eggs.
It's my mother.
You want to step out and talk to her?
No, no, I'll get a pass on this one.
You swiped that off pretty quickly there.
Yeah.
She's going to have proof you didn't take it.
So, but, so the knitting program is completely free. It's Thursday nights, it's a couple nights, a couple times a month, and our instructor donates her time, and she's able to get, you know, extra materials and it's, for someone who's never knit it before, you know, you don't have to know, they'll teach you everything you need to know, and it's very social. There's like twenty or thirty people that will show up on any given week, and it's a lot of fun. So that's something that's interesting and new for us. And for our little kids, we have what we call teddy bear crochet. If anyone's ever been to the mall and got roped into purchasing some of those Build-A-Bears, you'll notice that the clothing, an outfit for a Build-A-Bear is almost as expensive than an outfit for me. I could probably take one of my outfits and make a hundred Build-A-Bear outfits if I knew how to sew. But, so she actually goes through and teaches the kids how to crochet a sweater that would be for a teddy bear and things like that. So really fun and interesting stuff. Trips, it's not just about the art, you know, art and crafts, but we have trips. We're going to the New Jersey Devils on New Year's Eve. So that's going to be a fun day trip. It's a day game, so you won't miss any of the New Year's Eve festivities here in, you know, here. But, so it's a day game, you know, I couldn't pick a better way to, if you have, you know, people who are interested in hockey, to spend that day together, especially since it's between that Christmas break. So it's a great holiday gift idea if anyone's interested and knows a New Jersey Devils fan. So that's going to be December thirty-first. We're going to be leaving from Gilly Park right around ten forty-five in the morning. So we should be back in town by about five P.M., four thirty, five P.M., depending on how long the game goes, but it's a one P.M. start, so we should be good. Also, because we're always trying to provide service, during teachers' convention, the fall break, I think it's November eighth and ninth, we're going to be doing a kind of a drop-in program at Recreation. So anybody who needs childcare coverage, we have, some of my camp counselors who are college students who are home and high school students will be there. We have some fun programs and games lined up, so you'll be able to drop off at nine A.M., pick up at three P.M. Very similar to our camp timeframe, because not everybody's going to have those days off, and it's not necessarily a national holiday, but I know there's a lot of kids who have that break, have that time off, and need a place to go that's safe, structured, and...
Is it pre-registration required?
Yes, yeah, we do have to register for that ahead of time in Recreation, so I know exactly how much, how many resources.
Does it cost to that or?
Yes, I have it here.
Okay.
It's, if you do one day, it's forty-five dollars, and if you do both, we can get it to eighty dollars. So there is an incentive for if you need both days of coverage.
Sure.
Okay? And, you know, we have one more, we had a really fun event last week at the Historical Society's Old Schoolhouse Museum. We partnered with them, we do Real Ghost Stories of Lacey Township. We've been doing this for a couple years together, but we did it on a bus, where we stood, that was one of our stops, but nobody ever wanted to leave. They got to the museum, they heard the local legends and the local history, so they wanted to be there. So we decided to eliminate the bus and have people start and stop right at the museum. So we had our first one last week on the nineteenth, it was great, we had a hundred and fifty-nine people go through the tour. And so we have it again tomorrow evening, it's our last one. So if anyone's interested, we have tickets available from six o'clock. Tours start every twenty minutes, so there's a six o'clock tour, six twenty, six forty, and so on. We're just hoping Mother Nature holds out for us a little longer than she's advertising, so. And then moving right into our big winter program, which is the Lacey and Lights Program. Now, we're going to do things a little differently last year because we did not anticipate the popularity, and we ended up with, I want to say, close to fifty different houses who registered, and believe it or not, the bus tour ended up being three hours plus.
I wrote it, I wrote it.
I lost my voice an hour, one and a half at the second hour, so, but we're going to change things up a little bit, we're going to, I want as many people to enter as possible. I don't want it to be a deterrent. So we're going to publish different routes, so there'll be a route, you know, that you can take on your own to see this section of the neighborhood, and you can go do a different route another night. And then we're going to have a panel of judges go out on a certain night, and we'll let all the homeowners know that so they can have their best, their best display out, and we'll judge them, and we'll put signs in front of different houses that are finalists, and then we'll do a bus tour for the fifteen or so finalists that we've narrowed down to. So that should keep our tour at a more reasonable timeframe than three hours.
And you're always going to stop at the Methodist church for...
Yeah, I have to get my paperwork into them, but we have registered, we would like to register to do a Christmas tree there. They, last year started like, different organizations doing, decorating a Christmas tree, so you got to walk through their property, there was fifteen or so trees all decorated with different themes. Last year, we did a beach patrol theme, so we, and my staff may hate me a little bit still to this day for this, I made them take some old beach badges and make garland, pinning them one at a time together, eight hundred or so old badges later, you know, their fingers were bleeding and there was a lot of tears, but it's okay, it's okay. It looked great, and we took third place, so we want to make sure we go a little higher this year, so. But, yeah, so, you know, we're excited about that. So that'll be as a little stop, we'll have, you know, refreshments to catch up with all the, all the fun winter refreshments you would think of, so. When I stand in front of a microphone, I can talk a long time, so you have to forgive me if I'm talking too fast.
Keep on going, bud.
The, so we're, the last thing I really wanted to talk about was moving into, you know, next year, we have a lot of things planned, so we're going to be putting a couple different surveys out on our Facebook page, so I'd like, you know, people to, right after we get past the Halloween, we're going to put that out and start posting that. We are looking to upgrade our online services, so I'm going to need some feedback from the community about how we register for things, what's, you know, what, I need to get a better sense of how we're, how people out there need our services, so that's something that we're going to be going through, going through as we get past this Halloween season. But if anyone hasn't had a chance to get out to the Ghost Stories yet, we still have some tickets available tomorrow, you know, come early, but we had a campfire, some smores, it was a lot of fun, so. Any questions?
Now, tomorrow night, I know that we're not participants, is the trunk or trail, if I'm not mistaken, around Gilly Park, correct?
Yes, that's, I believe that's tomorrow evening.
Hopefully, the weather will hold out.
Yeah, we're all hoping for good weather, so it's, it'll be tomorrow evening. I know they've got a lot of fun scheduled, you know, I know the Rotary Club and the Police Foundation, right, there was a few other groups.
Methodist churches.
Methodist churches involved. So I know they're going to have a great, a great event, so, you know, but that's, I believe that's tomorrow, and it's, is it five to seven thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's five to seven thirty at Gilly Park, and I believe the registration is along the back trail by the basketball court, right here? Excellent, all right. So, any other questions?
Jim, thank you, do a great job. What about the Christmas parade? Anything different going on with that?
You said you were going to bring that up, you know.
We don't, we don't have a lot of detail work down on that, but I have to reach out to the Upps Club, I know that they schedule that every year.
Right.
I know Recreation wants to participate in some fashion.
Right.
So we're, you know, look for, you know, while the buses are operating, look for a decorated bus going down, handing out some things for our winter programs and things. So it's a good opportunity for us to get one-on-one.
Okay.
Face time and...
When you get that all worked out, let us know.
Absolutely, I'll be back.
All right, very good.
All right. Thank you very much, and once again, don't forget...
Thanks, Jim.
Our special farmer's market coming up, Monday to nineteenth, so it should be a lot of fun. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Number four, special use permit slash signs, Forker River Presbyterian Church.
Forker River Presbyterian Church is holding their annual holiday craft fair on Saturday, November seventeenth. They will be inside the building, it's obviously not outside the building, and they are just looking to advertise the event one week in advance with those typical two-by-two lawn signs throughout the community. I just need permission for them to post that.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I don't have any add-ons for this agenda, so we can adjourn this agenda. Motion to adjourn?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we can go right on into the township now.
Township meeting. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. I'd like to have a salute to the flag and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash thirty, amending chapter two seventy-three, property maintenance.
Noren to the Township Lacey County of Washington State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three seventy-three entitled Property Maintenance. What we're changing in the property maintenance code is related to unregistered vehicles, vessels, watercraft, cars on your property, that you cannot have, you can have zero unregistered vehicles unless they're in a contained garage or an approved accessory use. So whether it's a boat, a camper, a trailer, you're not allowed to have any of them in your property. And this will be enforced by the Code of Enforcement. This is first reading. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty, authorizing a contract with Municipal Cards.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing a contract with Municipal Cards LLC. Several weeks ago, we had a presentation from a state card or municipal card company where as they offer a rewards program for taxpayers here in the community. So it's a prepaid debit card where you would load money onto the card. It's a MasterCard logo on it, and with various local businesses could become members of it where they would offer a percentage back, like a reward, that would be applied towards your property taxes here. It's no money that you would get back, but it would be applied to your tax account. And there's also over three thousand online merchants that you can purchase from, such as Home Depot, Macy's, those type of purchases, and they give you a percentage back on your purchases to apply towards your property taxes. You can do, you can download, you know, through direct payroll, you can put money on there at any time. It's not a credit card, it's a prepaid debit card. So your daily purchases, whether it's at restaurants or whatever, also offer, even if it's not a participating company, offers you a reward incentive as well on these programs. So this is a program that we're marketing, there are several towns that do do it throughout New Jersey, and it's very popular in other states. So what happens is on a quarterly base, or actually, it should be, I believe, in May, by May of each year, the company sends over a file with the money to upload in credit towards your quarterly ta, your tax bill. So that, and then we would send out a reminder notice, and of course, that quarter would be reduced. So you wouldn't be paying this full amount if you earned reward incentive programs on it. There's an online app, you can follow it, you can see how much that you earn, and we'll be pushing this out for January and marketing it, and also marketing various businesses throughout the community to participate and offer rewards besides those online merchants. Mr. Curatola, I was going to say, do you want to say anything?
If I could, yeah, if I could comment, Mayor.
Okay.
It is something we're taking a hard look at for essentially the last five years. I'm glad we waited and did research to jump in. We're always looking to stand up for the taxpayers' money. Some of the other municipalities that jumped in a little earlier, I really believe that this is a program that is a better fit for Lacey Township. And one of the reasons is, we're going to make a lot of these purchases anyway. So the take-home point with this is, there's over thirty-two hundred merchants. They're online merchants. Each merchant will take very little homework on their part. I'm going to join. You say lead by example, I'm going to jump in. So this is something that, you look at the online purchases, we're an online community now, the young people live their lives on their phones and they're online. You take a look, you see what suits you, you do your holiday shopping, your Christmas shopping, whatever the case may be, and then you go right up, run, right on up into the spring in any home improvement. So with the covering of the thirty-two hundred merchants, we're, I mean, I'm, like I said the last couple of meetings, I did a lot of research on this, I have a part of optimism. It works if people sign up. I think it's going to bring additional foot traffic to our stores in town. I think that we are already, we've already proven that Lacey Township stands up for business. We stand up for small business, we stand up for our service businesses and our merchants. This is a destination, location in the county, in my opinion, for business to take root and to flourish. And that's why people choose to start doing business over here. And this is, this is just a complement to that. So I encourage people to jump in. These are purchases you may be making anyway. Please read before you start, but trust me, I would not be speaking well about a program... you start, but trust me, I, I would not be, be speaking well about a program that I didn't research extensively, that I wouldn't be joining. So I'm hopeful that a year from now, it, it blossoms and blooms and people are able to have substantial tax savings moving forward, and that's all my comments. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Motion? Motion. Can we have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-one, appointing a class-three special law enforcement officer.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, appointing Stephen J. Russell as a class-three special law enforcement officer. This will be our fourth officer that we have. Um, he will be on an as-needed basis to fill in for, uh, substitute so on and so forth, um, on an as-needed basis. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-two, promoting John Vincentini to supervisor for the Department of Public Works.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the provisional promotion of John Vincentini to supervisor in the Department of Public Works pending promotional procedures by the Civil Service Commission.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-three, opposing Senate bills S-106 and S-107.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, opposing the Senate bills S-106 and S-107. S-106 seeks to expand notice that is required, requiring with specific specification, the item to be discussed and approximate time to be discussed, requires agendas to be set forty-eight hours in advance, therefore not permitting any add-on items to the agenda unless a public urgency permits it, requires extremely detailed minutes to be provided within fifteen days of the next meeting, and opposes fee-shifting provisions to those successful movements except for public agencies, among other things. And Bill S-107 will make changes such as requiring certification of records facilities as well as creating a public finance website, which are on, an unfunded mandate.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-four.
Um, I need to pull that one because I'm still working out the final number that we're going to be putting in our budget, um, with regards to the reimbursement from the schools for our, um, class-three officer program.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-five, authorizing a special item of revenue in the twenty eighteen budget.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in appropriation of the twenty eighteen municipal budget known as the chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, four, dash, eighty-seven. This is our annual federal bulletproof vest partnership grant. Um, our reimbursement amount is nine thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents, and we basically, you know, continually just recycle and rebuy, um, bulletproof vests.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-six, authorizing a special item of revenue in the twenty eighteen budget.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in appropriation in the twenty eighteen municipal budget known as chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, four, dash, eighty-seven. We applied for, um, through the County of Ocean Community Development Block grant funds, um, and this year, what we're using those funds for are the eligible, um, low-income housing to make various improvements to those houses throughout town of qualified low-income, such as doors, windows, insulation, uh, improve their heating, uh, roofs, those things like that. And what happens is, it's a, it's a forgiveness loan, you, um, so that the improvements are done by a third-party contractor, not the town. Um, once it's done, there is a lien put on to the house, and you have to stay in the house at least ten years, and then it is forgiven, so you never have to pay that money back. If you shall move or sell your house or lose your house to, to some other means, um, there, there is a pro-rated scale depending on the years as to, um, how much you have to pay back at the time of closing.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Pete, did you?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-seven, authorizing the release of a performance bond for the bulkhead replacement project.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee posted by Albert Marine Construction Incorporated for the bulkhead replacement project. This is the Lakeside Drive bulkhead replacement on the south docks. The job has been completed, it's been accepted, and there is now a two-year maintenance bond in place on this project.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-eight, authorizing the cancellation of taxes.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel two thousand and eighteen taxes due on a property granted, the one-hundred percent disabled veterans exception, and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on block one fifty-nine, lot nineteen.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two sixty-nine, canceling old outstanding checks.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks from the Lacey Township current accounts and trust account. The total amount between the, the two, uh, counts is two thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents that's being canceled.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two seventy, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit monies held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash two seventy-one, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
I'm remiss in that I left, uh, my list of noted extensions in the back, so my option will be to abstain from the list unless there's-
It's, uh, T-0035 and O-121.
Look at that. Duly noted. Yes, save noted extensions by our administration.
Good job, Ron.
And Mayor Juliana?
I thank you.
Yes. Uh, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of October eleventh, twenty eighteen.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of October eleventh.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license applications for the Lacey Elks, the Lacey Elks Charitable Association, and the Rotary Club of Forkett River.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have, um, an add-on. It's a, it's a resolution, it's gonna be resolution two seventy-three. It's a resolution of Township Lacey County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for White Oaks at Lacey, Plumstead Court, various blocks and lots. This has been recommended by the township engineer, and this is the release of the, uh, maintenance bond as it withheld its two-year maintenance period. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Steve.
And Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
And that's all I have to add on.
That's all we have. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, let me just start with, uh, trunk or trail tomorrow night, um, that should be a good time, and we'll try to get over to that, and then we also have the, uh, down at the library, uh, down at the museum down there. Um, again, deserve two tickets, Jim, so I'll be down, we'll be down for that. Um, and I just wanna talk a little bit about, uh, food, the, uh, farmer's market, um, the coffee there, Jersey Charm, is, uh, the only coffee I keep in my house, and that's been for about a year and a half now. Really good coffee, they got decaffeinated, different flavors, which hard to come by, and then the other stuff is really good from what I understand, too. Um, the last thing I do wanna talk about is, is November sixth, it is Election Day. Uh, I don't care who you vote for, but it is the one time that everybody in this nation gets to participate in the government, and their vote needs, you need to get out and vote. Uh, it is so important, uh, that, because too many times we hear, you know, wow, I wish I had voted because I don't like what's going on, and things of that nature, and so I've always said, if you don't vote, don't complain. That's just the way it is. So November sixth, get out and vote, um, and, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Committee, McKennys?
Mayor, thank you. Um, last week, we had a chance to meet with the school board. We try and set up meetings, um, myself and Deputy Mayor McDonald, we try and set up meetings fairly regularly with the school board to just go over various issues and, um, uh, just trying to do anything we can to, to help some of the, uh, you know, if they have any problems or issues going on in the school system. There's a couple items I wanted to touch on, they, they're, um, um, the inter-local agreement for class-three officers is very well-received by the school board, and we're happy to, to provide that service with them, and, um, I don't wanna put words in Deputy Mayor's mouth, but they also recently filed a lawsuit, um, they, they have the reduction in state aid, so they joined a class-action lawsuit, and, uh, I believe we both support the, uh, their, uh, their litigation.
Yeah, they're gonna get-
We didn't discuss it with the rest, but I know we did.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're gonna lose about, what, one seven, one-point-seven million over the next five years in, in aid because of the way this formula is implemented, and it's, it's just wrong. It's just flat-out wrong.
Right, so we, so we all support, um, their, you know, ongoing litigation, uh, in order to try and get their state aid back. I also wanna touch on, uh, earlier, Exelon was here providing checks, uh, donations to, uh, clubs and organizations in town, volunteer organizations, and what's often overlooked, the, the focus on Exelon is usually how much revenue they bring to town, but Exelon has, for many, many years, provided a lot of, uh, donations to various clubs and organizations throughout town, and so, uh, I just wanna make everybody aware of that, that it's, will be sorely missed. Hopefully, uh, it'll go away, but it will be sorely missed if they do, uh, you know, and when they do ultimately close. And finally, as the Deputy Mayor touched on, I just wanna, um, remind everybody also to vote on, uh, Election Day. It's not only, um, you know, as Tim said, it is, you know, it's your chance to, um, voice your opinion, um, you know, on, uh, in, in government, but also gives us a chance to know how we're doing in Township also. It's a reflection on us as well, so, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee, and Curatola?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in accordance with what colleagues had already mentioned, I think in life, we control what we can control, uh, and try not to worry too much about what we can't control, and I hope to God we have the wisdom to know the difference.
Mr. Curatola?
Uh, so, with, uh, specific regard to property taxes, again, I'll, I'll just reiterate, this municipal card program, that's something we can control, and that's something that's, we're gonna enable and empower people in this town, uh, to make a dent in, in their property taxes. It will happen. Uh, I want to, uh, take just a couple of minutes and thank our Recreation Department. I want the people to know, uh, we had James up here, he talked about some of the programs, uh, with the colleagues that he's working with. They're fine stewards of taxpayer money. When you talk about nearly six hundred kids all summer long, forty hours a week, with some before-care and some after-care, at the lowest price point in the county for those programs, and those camp counselors are certified, they're certified for safety, they're certified for, uh, bully, recognizing bully behavior, things like that. Uh, I wanna thank our Recreation Department for the heavy lift that they do, and at, at a price point that I believe when you, uh, break it down to the hour, you're looking at, at somewhere around minimum wage per kid. I don't know the exact number, uh, but it, that's about right, uh, so kudos to the Rec Department. I wanna recognize the Police Department, we have our, our chief, lieutenant in the back of the room. Uh, the Blue Heart Program, this is a program that was started, uh, possibly a year ago, uh, and, uh, there are several municipalities in Ocean County that participate. We're very proud of our Police Department, and there, there are many and varied reasons for that, but I'll be brief. The Blue Heart Program gives, uh, somebody in the throes of addiction, uh, the opportunity to, uh, go and not have any questions asked, go to the police station, get transitioned into a treatment venue, somewhere in the care continuum. So, uh, as our former prosecutor had said many times, is, you know, we, we're not gonna arrest our way out of this, this mess, so there's gonna be a, a treatment component, an education component, a prevention component, and a law enforcement component. If you're dealing, you're selling, I want the full, full hammer of the law to come down on you within the scope of the law, and, and that's the way it should be, to protect our residents and our citizens, our parks, our kids and our seniors. Uh, but if you're in the throes of addiction and you don't have money for treatment, uh, there, there, there are some funding pathways out there for you, and now we have some police, Police Departments participating and doing some of the legwork to help those folks in those throes of addiction find some treatment venues. Uh, and so I just wanna recognize their efforts in the back. They're good people, they're great neighbors, and, uh, I, I support them, and I know we all do in our town. Uh, the Halloween event last week at Lucy Middle School, as usual, uh, with a town the size of ours, to see the amount of people that were there, uh, the smiles on the kids' faces. Uh, you know, at one point, I, I stood near the stage, I looked out, I, I really couldn't see the floor, there were that many people there. You know, the chief was there, my recreation director, everybody, there's some other folks that I recognize, uh, and I just wanna say thank you for having that participation. If you have children, you know how special it is for those kids to, to be involved in that, and there are my comments for this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to touch first on recreation, as we said, we, we know how important it is. Uh, today, I had the honor to have the, uh, Mayor's Roundtable at the Ocean County College, and, and the students at the college were able to ask questions, and it really surprised me. I, I thought maybe we were going to, we know, you know, we're hearing so much about this marijuana bill. It wasn't brought up. The, the topic every student brought up was recreation throughout Ocean County. Give us something for us to do in Ocean County, other than to hang out on the streets or whatever, and, and that was the question they were asking, what each town has planned to do, and, uh, it, it really amazed me. I thought we were gonna be hit with different questions other than that, but the topic out of seven people that asked questions, five of it was, give us something with recreation. So I wanna thank you, Jim, because it's very important, recreation, as it is in all the towns of Ocean County, because that's what they're asking for, to get more involved, get more things happening, so the kids can have something to look forward to, other than just to go hang out. Um, tomorrow, senior luncheon, um, I look forward to that. I think it's dress-up time, right, Peter?
Shoot, where do you want me to go?
You can go, is it whatever you wanna go?
Halloween?
Yeah, Halloween party tomorrow. Am I right, Bill? You're getting dressed tomorrow, right, to go?
Jim, Jim's back there shaking his head, so.
They mentioned that the, uh, the trunk and trail, who's sponsoring that? Rotary?
Rotary, Lacey United Methodist Church and the Lacey Police Foundation.
I wanna thank all of them. It's at Gilly Park tomorrow, like they said, five to seven thirty. Um, thank you to them. Uh, they mentioned about the, uh, Municipal Alliance. I had the honor last Saturday to go to the Halloween parade there, uh, party that they had at the middle school. I wanna thank Heather and, and all the Municipal Alliance for a great job they do. Um, I wanna just remind people, uh, you know, trick, you know, trick-or-treat is coming, please, slow down, watch the kids out there. Um, as we know, there, it's gonna be crowded out on the street, so please be careful. Um, November sixth, if you're right to vote, please, whatever you feel is in your heart and what you feel is the best to do, please get out and vote. Um, I'd just like to leave on a note, I, I would like to thank all of our organizations through town, which I always do every time, uh, whether it be the Police Department, the Fire Department, the volunteers, the Municipal Alliance, everybody, Public Works, uh, I'd hope I don't miss anybody, I, everybody in town. Thank you for the great job and how you make Lacey great. Uh, I wanna thank you very much, and, uh, we'll open another to the public. Mr. Bender?
Yes, sir. Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. Um, got here late as usual, thanks for work. I had a question, I had highlighted on here something that I wanted to ask about, I don't know how, what detail you guys went into, but the, uh, Senate one oh six and Senate one oh seven, was there much discussion on that here, or did I miss a lot?
No discussion, I just, um, highlighted what those two bills, um, pertain to.
Okay, and how, how-
We're opposing them. We're opposing them.
Okay, and the reason we're opposing it is?
Well, it's going to add additional costs to the township because it's an unfunded mandate, and the other one, it's just not realistic to be able to, the advertising for the meetings, the agendas, you couldn't have add-ons unless they were for special reasons. The subcommittee, subcommittees would have to have minutes and meetings as well, and those kind of things.
I was reading, I didn't go much into the 107, but I had a little time to read.
And this is where the League of Municipalities is also coming from, is to have the municipalities oppose those two bills?
Gotcha, okay. Of course, I know they were talking a lot about internet, if I didn't misread, they were talking about doing a lot more on the internet as far as, you know, publishing things.
No, no, that's not, listen, I'd be all for the internet, yeah, that's an easy thing, but no, that doesn't pertain to that, no.
Okay, yeah, I should have read it in more detail, but just wanted to know where we were going with it.
I would love for them to go to the internet versus the newspaper, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Also, just wanted to say, for everybody out in TV land, November 6th is a big day. A lot of people have given their lives for our right to vote on November 6th. Please honor those people, come out and vote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Senator Solis Sunrise Beach. Number one, thank you very much for accepting the contract on municipal cards. Kind of pushed it for a bunch of years, it's finally got something that we can do for ourselves, and also for the people in the town. So when it comes out, you go to advertise, you're going to use our township website.
There'll be something posted at our township's website.
Yeah, we'll put it on the website, we'll put it on our Facebook page. Depending on the time of the year, I may be able to put out a mailer, like if it's when I'm doing another mailer. I'm also thinking, it might confuse it, the MUA sends out monthly bills, whereas we only send out one bill. Maybe they can throw a flyer into their bill, but I don't want to confuse that to make it think it's an incentive off your winter superbill.
The calendar, recycling...
Well, the calendar, it might be too soon for me to put a flyer into that, but I am looking into that.
Okay, township's that already have it, most of it is on the website, and the successes are, the successes of it are also advertised, and that draws more people in.
I expect you to be the first one online to get the card.
Could be, could be, but after a while. I have a question on, you talked about towns, houses in the township that qualify for code and to refurbish them.
It's not qualified for code, don't get the two confused.
That's why I'm confused, I want to know.
Okay, so if you make a certain amount of income, like, and it is within the Affordable Housing Guidelines, okay? It is. You can apply to have energy efficiency improvements made to your house, as long as they're in disrepair, you know, and it does include water heaters, and those items that you could almost write off on your Schedule A on your taxes, well, the old Schedule A on your taxes, the windows, the doors, the insulation, the roof, the HVAC, those items. And if you are income restricted, and you have that income, and you qualify, and you have to own the home, or, you know, mortgage on the home, you can apply to get that work done on your home. It's on a first-come, first-served basis, and we have been advertising it for approximately a month now, and we had 30 residents from this community apply towards it. And again, just because you're first on the list, could you get it? Yes, but you have to qualify.
Now, does that reduce our code liability?
Yeah, it does go towards our rehab count. It does go towards our housing rehab count.
Okay.
We had done this approximately 10, 11 years ago, so a lot of those have already fallen off, and I've canceled those liens on those mortgages. So, yeah, we've done this 10 years ago, and now we're back at it again to do it again.
All right, now, question. Is it just I have to own the home, or is it rentals included?
No, 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 because you would be the owner, so we include, you would have to be the owner, and you would have to qualify based on the income, and you would have to live in a house, owner occupied.
Okay, all right, that takes that question away, because my next question has to do with renters and renters and landlord responsibility within the township. As far as I understand, if you are a landlord in a township, you must, under law, fill out a disclosure statement.
Correct.
Okay? If you do not fill out the disclosure statement, you are subject to fine by the municipality, correct?
By the municipal court judge. Usually what happens is a code enforcement handles that, so, again, we don't know if you rent your house or not, okay? So your neighbor or somebody...
Why not?
Because there's no requirement to register until you put your tenant in the house. So now I move out of town, I still have ownership of my house, and again, the municipality doesn't know you moved out of town, because you may not change your address. Your mailing address still may say the Forkett River address, or you might have a P.O. box, and that doesn't mean that you don't live in town. So usually it's based on a disgruntled tenant comes in, or a neighbor does say something like, listen, this house is falling apart, it looks like it has tenants, they come in and they make a complaint to code enforcement. He obviously checks the records if there's no landlord tenant.
Well, how do they do that now? If I'm in, you know, my neighborhood, and I notice that there's some people who, everybody has what they identify as undesirable, you know, you may identify one type of person undesirable, another person may say, well, if they're liberal democratic radicals, they're undesirable in my neighborhood, okay? If they see something and they know that house is rented, they could come to the township...
Make anonymous complaint that they believe that, well, they might call up and say, is, you know, 123 Main Street registered as a rental property? And, no, it's not, okay? They'll make a complaint to code enforcement, and they can do it anonymously, and we're not allowed to give out the individual's name.
Or fill out an open request for the information?
Yeah, you fill out the open request for the information, and we would send them back saying no such document on file.
Okay, so you maintain a list, everybody you know that is already filled out a disclosure form as a landlord?
The actual disclosure forms we have, yes.
And if they are reported and they are not listed as a landlord, they're in violation of the ordinance, is subject to fine?
First, they get a violation notice to correct the situation, and they have a certain amount of time to correct the situation. If they fail to correct the situation, yes, a summons can be issued to them, and they have to appear before municipal court, and the municipal court judge could assess a fine to them.
Okay, so you have...
And they're not able to, now, let's say you're the landlord and you're having problems with your tenant, you go file for eviction at landlord tenant court, without that form on file, it stays for 90 days, and then you have to come back in and you have to be rescheduled again up in Tom's River Landlord Tenant Court to be heard before the matter.
All right, well, the reason I'm bringing this up is there's a couple of things that come into play here. With the demographics and the things that are happening, there's a lot more foreclosures in a township, okay? And so a lot of properties that were valued at one time at a lot of money are now not valued at a lot of money, and the people are moving out, and they're leaving those properties.
How do you say they're not valued? Because the assessments haven't gone down on those houses, just because it's vacant doesn't mean the assessment was lowered.
I am not talking about the assessment, and I understand that is part of the problem, okay? But the neighborhood itself, and the people who are in the neighborhood, their values and their quality of life may be affected because the people who are in those rental homes don't have skin in the game. You know what I'm trying to say? So my question comes that if they're reported, that we know in our street, in our neighborhood, there's five or six rentals, and we report that to the township. The township would take action to identify whether they're on the list or not.
Correct.
And also would be under obligation, under the ordinance, to notify the landlord. The landlord doesn't respond, then it goes to municipal court. If there's fines that are imposed, and fines are collected, could the fines be directed to a specific account?
No.
No.
Not allowed by law.
It just goes into...
Right, it just goes into the general fund collected by the municipal court because it was written on a municipal ordinance.
Okay. I was like, I was looking with a credit card to try to get the, try to get some money for the volunteer organizations. I thought maybe we could get something to start a P.A.L. within 10 years, and that's the other thing I've been after. Question, under unregistered vehicles under Chapter 273, and I see it's the first reading, this is vehicles on private property?
Correct.
Or just on roads?
You're not, that falls under Chapter, under Title, New Jersey Statute Title 39. In the streets is a police matter. On private property would be municipal enforced based on what my rules and regulations are in the code.
So if this goes through after the three readings, with no opposition and it's voted, no unregistered vehicles at all of any type could be on private property?
Outside.
Outside.
Outside, it has to be enclosed.
And in an approved, yes, structure, correct.
Boats, jet skis, they're all, they have to be registered. Utility trailers.
Yes, and we will be doing an amendment to utility trailers and those such too under master plan update as well in the near future.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you. Regina?
Regina Descends of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I just have a question. Recently, the DOT put up a lot of cameras on Route 9 at several various intersections, did anybody see them?
That's the count, that's an additional way to count the traffic because of those, yes, I checked into that because I couldn't figure out what was going on.
I don't know what, it looks like a video thing.
But it's part of the counters, they're trying to really help us with regards to, and we have just requested a meeting with the DOT, so they're doing their due diligence to have a good report for us when we sit down and say, we've got to do something with the traffic flow, and it's basically on the south end of town.
Yeah.
So, yeah, those are additional counters on the traffic lights.
Okay, thank you.
Captain?
Good evening, Gavin Rozi, Forkett River, New Jersey, speaking tonight in my capacity as the administrator of opermachine.com. Earlier in the meeting, the governing body took action to oppose Senate Bill Number 107. I can certainly appreciate the municipality's concerns about unfunded state mandates, but I have to say I'm a bit disappointed because I believe it's a bit of a reactionary approach. For the benefit of the residents, I'm going to read some bullet points here from the New Jersey Foundation for Open Government about some of the key benefits that S-107 would provide both to requesters, government agencies, and stakeholders from the public. S-107 would require posted notice of the name and contact information for the agency's custodian of records.